Appreciate everyone being here tonight. As you can see, we are a little short. Two council members that had prior engagements. We've also, the mayor is on city business tonight as well. So, first order of business for tonight's work session will be a discussion of the 90-ton chiller replacement at the Fairhope Public Library. Mr. George Alad, Assistant Public Works Director.
How are we all tonight?
We're good. How about you?
Good. The discussion of the difference between the York and the, and the train, is what you want me to tell you, the differences? Is that what my understanding is?
Yep, you asked her to speak to it. So whatever you want to, whatever you want to inform us of on these, it's a big expense.
It is a huge.
We thought we should make an informed decision.
It is definitely a big difference, but there are some different things about train that make, you want to turn an eye towards train regardless of the price. And one of those things is, is the, the York has a MCHX, which is the abbreviation for micro-channeling heat exchange. And that is an issue that all the other chillers that we have in our city system of having, having failures with. And like the K-1 Center, the reason why the chiller system was not able to get running was because of the micro-channeling heat exchange coil system, which, that's the coils on the unit. So when you look at the difference between train and York's warranty, York's warranty is for 66 months, parts only, no labor involved. And if I'm not mistaken, it is basically just the compressors, not the coils.
But that's only on the coils, right? Yeah.
Yes. And trains is 10 years, parts and labor. I realize there is a large price difference between the two of them, but if you look into it, it's, it's not real, to me, it's not comparing apples to apples, it's more like apples to oranges. But I understand that the bottom line is, is a very important aspect that we look in I do know for a fact that York is going to be a louder chiller, much louder. And I don't know if that's going to be an issue or not, but it's something to consider.
The, well, I just looked at the, the train proposal, and it has a 10-year parts warranty and a one-year labor warranty. So, not, not 10-year labor warranty on that. So, I realize that the, the channels, the, trying to think of the word you just told me, the MCHX warranty is 66 months, and I call that five and a half years.
Right.
And it is parts only, and I hear you on that. But the York on everything but the MCHX is a 10-year warranty on parts and labor.
Right.
So, aside from that, it's nine more years of labor. It's also has a refrigeration warrant of 18 months compared to the, I'm sorry, compared to the one year for the train. And as I say that, the, the option to, the one train that was given us by Johnson Controls, let me correct myself now, you are right, 10 years, parts and labor on that proposal.
Yeah.
It's funny that the train proposal, though, gave a 10-year parts warranty and a one-year labor warranty.
Right.
So, you got to read them close, so.
Right. And I, train or Johnson Controls, it, to me, it doesn't matter which way we go on that one, other than the fact that just train seems to be a better unit in general, in my opinion. But train.
You know, I don't think you're going to get an argument from us on that at all. But I think what we really are concerned about is the fact that the, the train is 31 and it's $43,000 more, it's, it's 50% more.
It's a drastic price difference.
The warranties are similar, aside from the MCHX, which is only five and a half years. And I, and I hear you on that. And I, and I heard from Lance today, and Lance told me that that is the part that seems to fail.
Right.
But when you can almost get two for the price of one, what do you do? Do you roll the dice and, and, you know, because even if it lasts, you know, half as long, you've saved as much money to buy another brand-new one.
Right.
In five or six years, and then you, then you have another totally new one in five or six years.
That's right. I do get that.
That's kind of.
I, that's basically why I'm just trying to help put that out there, the difference between the two of them. And then hopefully train, I mean, York has gotten better, like you would like and hope and think that they have improved.
I did speak to Richard Johnson about this as well, and he said that he had had some experience with them and Daphne, with his time he spent there, and that he was pleased with them.
Right.
And I don't think that he would tell you that it's a better product, but I think that it might be an adequate product.
Right.
And I know, looking at the library, you don't want them breaking down every five years, but, you know, if I told you we were going to give you a new one every five years, too, you might go, well, that's not a bad deal either, and it's almost the same cost. So, that's something, we're going to decide in the, in the council meeting, we're not voting on it here. But do y'all have any questions?
No, I just, I mean, I just think it's such a substantial price difference, it's hard, hard to not agree with the York.
Sorry, explain it, that kind of price difference, I mean, I'll be honest with you.
Does 88 versus 131?
88 versus 131, yeah. Any other questions for George?
No, appreciate you.
Now, we appreciate the work. I know it's a lot of work to go in and get in these bids and, and trying to compare apples to apples as well. And then you see even the warranties are slightly different among the various components. So, you know, you did mention that the, at the K-1 Center, tell me that story again.
So, the K-1 Center, whenever we took over the K-1 Center and we went up there and met with the Ballin County Board of Education Maintenance Department, you walk up to the building and you see a brand-new York chiller unit sitting outside, and you're like, well, that's cool, we're inheriting a brand-new York chiller unit. But after upon talking to the HVAC maintenance guys, they never could get the unit to run.
They never got it to run.
They never got it to run. And that was one of the reasons why they didn't want to have to deal with it anymore, apparently.
So, they bought it, they never had it installed?
No, it was installed.
I was going to say, do we have a spare York unit laying around there that we might could use?
They just couldn't get it to function, apparently, appropriately.
Okay. But they didn't say whether or not it was related to these coils, did they?
They didn't, they didn't, as far as I know, they did not clarify that that was the issue, no, sir.
Was that a Mr. Johnson?
It was.
Okay. He's still ahead of their, he's still their head HVAC guy for the school?
To be honest with you, I haven't talked, he was diagnosed with cancer the last time I talked to him, and I have not spoken to him since.
Okay.
So I do not know.
All right. I knew him, I know him to be a good man, too.
He is a, he is a fine man.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions, council?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you going to be here for the council meeting as well, if we have more questions on this?
Yes, sir, I will be.
Okay, all right. Thank you, George.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item on tonight's work session agenda is discussion of the second floor build-out for the Fairhope Public Library. And we've got a host of dignitaries here today.
We sure do. Good afternoon, I'm Ann Johnson, I'm the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees, and we have all the other members of the board here, Tamara Dean, our director, and Ann Brooks of Mont McDonald of Mobile. As you may know, Mont McDonald was selected by the library for professional services related to the renovation of the second floor. And this line of effort was divided into two parts. The first was space planning and preliminary interior design, and we've got some of those schematics here for you to see. And then the second part, construction drawings. So, in, at our April 19th board meeting, the board approved the first phase of the project. And this is for a new teen space upstairs, a revamped technical, technical services and friends area, and enhanced maker space. So the next phase will be the construction documents, architectural engineering specifications, HVAC, the works. So we're here today to, first of all, bring you all up to where we, we are with the project. And secondly, to clarify for Mont McDonald, who would be the point person on the next contract?
Okay.
So again, they've divided that up into two, two pieces. And to move forward on the project, this would really help us to have that legal binding contract with the city, or Mont McDonald with the city. We anticipate, you know, putting out bids next year, fiscal year '22 for the construction. Obviously, this next phase will help us develop a realistic budget, help the friends and the foundation, look at fundraising efforts for the coming year. So I do have a lot of expertise here, if you've got any questions for us. Thanks.
You said that that would begin in the construction phase in 2022?
That's our goal, yeah.
Okay. All right. And then how long would that take?
I don't know.
I think it's funded over six months.
Six months, okay. Tamara, I know you've been talking about the teen space for, seems like as long as I've been on the council, and I know, and we had that leased, and now you're able to do that. So that's, that's exciting. What can the city do for you?
Well.
As you say, I'm glad you asked.
Mike, do you have time? I think what we need to know is how to proceed as far as contracts, and, do you want to add anything?
Well, one question that we had to clarify, since the city owns the facility, but it's managed by the board, who do we make the construction document contract with?
Right.
Does it have to be signed by both? And what template do we need to use, since we've worked, worked for the city of Fairhope in the past?
Okay.
Have we used the template?
I'm going to ask Marcus to answer those questions.
If you'd like what we did with the rework and the exterior portion of it, please solve that.
Can you put that mic a little closer to you, so everybody can hear you?
I can actually turn it on.
Yeah.
Sorry. I believe it just operates exactly like we had when we did envelope work previously, and it was done through the city. But this is something that's kind of there, they're doing all the, the design phases of it, so it would be, the contracting part of it would come through the city, just run like, you know, any other normal contract. Now, I don't, is this something that's coming out of your budget here, or is there a budget that the city's got for this, or, I don't know where the funds are originating from?
Well, we've got some funds for this, and we're, we were hoping the city could help, and we also have our friends and foundation groups that will be helping with fundraising and trying to get as much of this covered, you know, that way, too.
The foundation already paid for the preliminary costs.
Right.
And we're going to try to help as much as we possibly can with anything else.
I guess my question would be, depending on the threshold of the cost, would that, you have to enter into the bid law, and then you have to go through the city for that. I'm assuming it's going to be over $50,000, is that safe to assume?
Yes, or it will have to be bid.
Okay, it'll have to be bid then. Then I guess you would have to go through the city's bid process to do so. But you know, we've also entered into partnerships with, say, Single Tax and others, in which they were able to, to have the bids. There's some exceptions to that, and I may not be articulating that.
Those issues, I think, are situations where they would actually take control of, like, they would have, like, the soccer complex, they would build the entire thing, and then it would go, it would just be donated to the city. Here, we're actually working on a city building and reconstructing part of it.
I got you.
And so it's a little, it's a, there's a little difference there. I think if you're doing something with a partnership with the Single Tax, for example, and they are providing services such as, we're going to contract to build X, Y, and Z, and then we're going to donate that work to the city, that's one thing. But you're dealing here with, you're tearing out part of a city building, which has to be, y'all are in charge of the property, so you've got to approve all that, you've got to approve the construction and the re-engineering and redesign of everything. I think it's safer if you go ahead and just run through the city process and do it that way.
Okay. Do you have preliminary cost estimates? I mean, so we can keep the ball rolling. I mean, I know that you're going to say, well, it's cost this much, how much does the city, does the city want to help out? And then, before we know that, we're going to, you know, before we put it out to bid, we're going to have to know what that arrangement is. You're going to agree to pay X amount, and the city's going to agree to pay X amount. So, I would think, and Marcus helped me out here, and council helped me out here, but the next step would be to just give us an idea of what we're talking about here.
The first contract that we executed.
Can I get you to come to the podium, so people watching can, can hear you?
I'm Ann Brooks with Mont McDonald.
Yeah.
The first contract that we executed with the library board of trustees was for schematic design. So we have the preliminary design that we'd like to execute, but we haven't taken it into construction documents where we could get a construction cost on it yet.
Okay.
So we're a little preliminary, we've just got the ideas and the space planning, but we haven't been able to put anything more than a cost per square foot, which, as you know with construction right now, is not a really good way to estimate.
That's another question for us all, too, is, is now the time to pursue it? And I've heard, I've heard, I've heard good news and bad news on that front, though. I've also heard that the construction prices have gone up so sharply that a lot of people are backing away from commitments that they made, and they're thinking that potentially work's going to stop on a lot of things soon. But I think what you'll see is a lot of volatility in that market as it, as it tries to find a sweet spot.
And. Did you say that we're not going to be using so much lumber?
Right, there's, there's very little structural change, it's mainly finishes and, and use. So as far as the renovation, it's very.
No lumber, no concrete, right?
Yeah.
That's good.
And, and, but we're asking for the second part of the contract, being to know who to execute it, write it with, that work is a, is a solid package by itself. So you could put it out to bid within 30 days of it being completed, or you could wait six months. So once the work is done, when you put it out to bid is a total, a different schedule.
So, so maybe even your construction estimates might be, who knows, right? May, may miss the mark, may be high, may be low, right?
And then you could rebid it in six months, or, or, once, once you have the documents, you're flex, you're more flexible.
So you need to put your construction documents together? Okay. And then, now, were you planning on paying for that, or can you tell us the cost for that?
We don't have any.
I guess they would have to select you.
It's already covered, yes.
Come on, if you want to add, yes, sir.
I'm John Peterson with Mont McDonald, and I'm responsible for the Alabama Territory for Mont McDonald. And, you know, in, in the earlier discussions, we did prepare quotation for both the schematic and then the full construction product, construction plans. And I think those estimates were somewhere in the 40,000-plus range combined. Now, we took care of the schematic design already, and so now there's going to be that residual component, which is the bulk of the work, you know, probably close to 40, or 40, between 40 and $45,000 to prepare construction documents for that build-out of that effort. That's my understanding.
Which, and I hate to say this to you, but, but Marcus, it does beg to ask the question, then, is the, if the library's choosing the professional services provider, I mean, should it be the city choosing the professional services provider? If they're paying for it, I would, you could reason that they could choose who they want, it's just a study that they choose to pay for, right? But then how far along in this project do you go in selecting a professional services provider? And I only say that because I don't want to disqualify you from anything either, we need to make sure we do it properly.
If they're doing it, and we work real well with the library board, but, I mean, it's, it's one of those things, like, if I went out personally, did it, and hired them to do the work, there's no guarantee that you would actually ever accept that as part of construction documents, but we all, everybody's worked together, and I don't think there's any prohibition against them going and getting independent.
I don't think so either, but if you go into the next phase, this next study to put these documents together, right, which you're estimating to be 40 to $45,000.
They're not turning any wrench on any city property, so.
So, I mean, are, were you planning on paying for that as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, but.
Then that time they come back to.
Yeah, then that time they can come back. I just wanted to make sure that, like, if you were to come back and say, well, we need help with funding of this, prepare, preparation of these documents, I don't, I don't think that you could simply hire them and then tell us to pay for it, or ask us to pay for it.
But would we be assured that you would be willing to work with them? I mean, is, or, will that be another question?
It would be something that you would need to discuss with the mayor. You know, the mayor typically chooses the professional services provider, makes a recommendation to the council. The council can overrule that and pick our own, it's very rare that we do that. We'd have to have a real good reason to do that. So, I would suggest you talk to Mayor Sullivan and make sure, but if you're thinking about asking us to pay for that, let's make sure that we, you get on the same page with the mayor and that we do it properly. Because I believe that if we're paying for that, we would have to, the mayor would have to make the selection, and we would have to approve the selection of the provider.
But even if the library is going to pay for it, we want to make sure that there's not going to be any second guessing there, where, so if the library agrees to pay for this next step.
Yeah, if you, yeah.
Then we still want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with that. I mean, I have no issue with that, I'm sure. There wouldn't be much of an issue.
Jimmy's history with Mont McDonald, I wouldn't have any issues with it, but I think you're right, though, I think that it would be wise just to make sure.
The mayor's good with that.
That everybody's.
And then at the point that you're, you get, prepare construction docs, at the point that we're putting it out to bid, then I think that needs to be handled by the, by the city council.
Yeah, and Jimmy, Jimmy kind of brought up a good, a good point, or maybe, I don't know if you intend to do this, but you guys have got to prove the concept of this first, as far as, hey, yeah, that's a good idea, and then they go put pen to paper with that. And the risk that they take, that the library board takes is, if y'all are doing it, you've got control over it, and you say, yeah, we want this, that, and the other, because ultimately that's what's going to have to happen. But if they do it independent of y'all, they're going out with this diagram, getting all the construction documents done based on this diagram, and y'all could come back and say, we don't like that, or we don't like that. And I think that's why they may have broken it up into two phases, to say, hey, is this acceptable, and then we move forward with the next round of it.
I kind of look to, to, to all of you for advice on what you need to best serve the needs of the community. And so, if you want that feedback from, at least, in my opinion, is, you've done a good job in setting out the, the plans for the, the build-out of the second floor. And it's not a total surprise to me, because over the many years you've been telling us that this is what you wanted to do. So, I mean, I'll defer to Jimmy and Kevin.
I definitely, I mean, serving as the library board liaison, I mean, I, I think this has been something that's been in the works since before the expiration of the contract and the lease with, with South. So we've been working, I mean, coastal thing, we've been working towards having that space reclaimed by the library, and I certainly would defer to Tamara and the rest of her staff as far as how the build-out needs to look. Now, when, at the time that we have construction docs and coming back to the city to put it out to bid, because it is city-owned property, and, and we're the ones that are going to have to step in and, and help the library with the funding, that's something that we would need the city council and the mayor to be on board with, and then building that into their budget, so that, you know, now they've got some money coming towards it, the city's going to have to kick in some. They may do some fundraising, but at that point, we need to have, have that built into the budget for 2022 as much as possible.
Yeah, and so, to that point, budget discussions among, at least among the mayor and the department heads will start, I mean, maybe even as soon as this week, they're, they're upon us. So, definitely, you know, get your wishes, you know, to, to the mayor, and speak to your council liaison, and he'll speak to the council about that. So, Kevin, do you have any thoughts about the, the plans?
It's funny how complicated things can get just to do a renovation.
Well.
Basically, but the point of it is.
Government, red tape.
Unfortunately, is the way the government red tape is set up, and, but, you know, advisory, I mean, the library board is advisory board to the council, and we've relied on them in a lot of things, and if they're okay. Well, if Mont McDonald is going to hand, charge out a whole bunch of unnecessary stuff and want to put this on a bill, generally, you know, I'm not to say we're going to take the recognition every single time, I don't see a problem at all. And getting this started, getting this ball rolling, let's get to a point, because the bottom line is what's going to cost unless you have a set plan. Well, and understanding what we're going to do, you know, we're going to cost, so I don't have any issues with this, you know, proceeding, just like you were talking about.
And I think, if you mind, from our perspective, from Mont McDonald's perspective, we just want to make sure we're, we contract with the proper entity, so if we can coordinate with your council in regard to that, and to make sure that if it's the City of Fairhope entity, I know y'all have contract forms, and we got to run them through our legal stuff.
Right.
And those kind of things. So, just want to make sure that we do that correctly, so that then, you know, these folks don't get into something that they.
Right. Well, so then, so then back to the process, if the library, or the library foundation, or the friends of the Fairhope Library, if any of them wanted to hire you to put together those plans, they can, they can do so. If, if you want to go through the city, the proper way to enter into that contract would be to get the mayor to select you for professional services, like we do any other professional services provider, and we have a standard form. And, you know, and we do tweak them, everybody's are a little different, but Marcus looks at all of those, and that would be the, the proper way to go with that. Does that answer the question? And I think that maybe the library would want to say, you know, well, we're going to, we, we want you, we're going to, we're going to, we're willing to pay you, and then they could do that. And then it would be a simple matter of just getting, and you've heard from three council members, just hear from the mayor and say, I don't see any problem moving forward. So, if you, if you get that nod, then I think that you're safe to either go in with the library or bring it back to the city for approval. All right, our treasurer wants to weigh in.
I think to try to help out, I mean, for them to get the plans going, and if it comes back to funding-wise, we know the cost, it's a shared cost, we would have a, what I call, community grant comes from the foundation, from the library to the city, and at that point, then the city's going to enter a contract for the engineer to oversee the project when the bidding's going out.
That's the construction phase.
That's the construction phase. I think for what you're trying to get to is you're to do the drawings, to get to the point, to come up with.
Right.
So it's, the library wants to.
I'm okay if the library does that directly.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yes.
And I think as long as you got three out of five that say it's okay, just run it by the mayor, if she's okay with it, then I think you could proceed that way, and then switch to the city at the time of.
And once y'all have, come up with an estimated cost, then it can come back to the city, the city could decide there to run forward, want to continue with this same professional service, we just enter a different contract.
Right.
For the oversee of the project.
Right. That's right. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I may not have said it like she said it, but yeah. So does that answer everyone's questions?
So we have what we're going to do.
Do you, does that help you with your next step, so you know what to do next?
We're going to talk to the mayor, number one.
Okay. Right.
Which we had a conversation with her, with Ann Brooks, and she's the one who told us we needed to get on the agenda of the county.
Right.
So, she's aware.
Okay. I can't imagine she would, I don't think she'll balk at it. What do you think, Mr. Stanikowski? You're mighty quiet.
I'm just listening, y'all doing a good job.
Okay. All right.
Just, just a comment. I was on the council when the library was built, and, and the, the reason it was built the size that it was, was to have this expansion. And now, we've been looking at it for two to five years.
And now you're a part of that, too?
And that's, it's, it's finally coming around the way it was supposed to.
We've been talking about since we moved in in 2007, we've been fighting about the expansion, and then.
Aside from the air conditioner issue that we're going to address tonight, how, how's everything else going with the repairs that were made?
The repairs were what?
The roof that was, what, a year ago?
Are you talking about the roofs?
The roof, and, yeah.
We did have some spillage.
You did have some more leakage?
Well, we had leakage from the air conditioning overflowing twice.
Oh, that's what that was, so it was, that was caused by the air conditioner?
Yes.
Okay, and that actually made its way into the library?
Oh, yeah, blocks.[1792.13]
A whole floor's been taken up by rain.
Of the new, you know, the new flooring.
How did that make it, how does that, was, are the, is the air conditioner on the roof? And did that make it through the roof? George, can you help me with that? Yes?
On the spot, bro.
How are you, George?
Hey, if you're going to come to a council meeting, we're going to give you some action.
So, on the east end of the building, the air conditioning unit, it's inside the mechanical room upstairs, the condensate line. The first time was just yearly maintenance needed to be done. The condensate line had algae buildup in it and backed up. And when it backs up, that's a lot of water up there. It floods the entire floor in the room, mechanical room. And all it does is travel the path of least resistance.
It wasn't on the roof then?
No, it's inside.
I remember that room then.
Yes, sir. And that, the floor drain that's in that room is only low in one spot, about eight inches in diameter. And that's where all the condensate line run to. So when it runs on the floor, instead of the floor being sloped to the floor drain, it's just flat. So the water just goes everywhere up there, and it leaked down. Well, we hired Serpro to come in and do remediation of the water and anything that was damaged by the water. And then ran dehumidifiers and fans for a few days, pulled up flooring to make sure any of the flooring didn't have any issues underneath it. And while we were waiting on quotes and everything for everything to come back in, the condensate line had been put back on a tray system that we had actually removed it off of. Because if you looked at on the tray system, the condensate line actually had a slight incline, instead of a decline, and caused it to back up a second time. But the good thing was, is we already had everything removed, so there was pretty much nothing stopping the water from going upstairs to the down floor. So we went in ourselves, because we felt like we could do just as good of a job. Plus, I'm buying some small meter type of stuff, so we can do the same thing as Serpro. We went and rented a large dehumifier, put it in the same location as they did. We're going to get a stent meter and check the walls and the ceiling and everything, and make sure everything's nice and dry. No need to be repaired, but it is in the works to be repaired.
Were you checking those condensation lines?
Condensate line has been put back.
Put a couple Clorox down the line, I don't know.
Yes, sir, and we've, we've sucked the lines out and put some, some, some drain cleaning type material in there. And, and now have tried fastening it to where we want it to be, to stay. So we should.
Okay. Is it not a shut-off valve? I mean, like my house, is it automatically shut-off valve?
There is not a float switch on there. And I need to do more investigating, my personal self, on that. I, I think that I've been informed that being that big of a system, I'm not sure they make them like that. But we might have to find a way to make it happen.
How often should they be cleared, those lines?
They probably should be cleared every six months.
Should we call you all every six months?
Uh, we are working really hard on trying to get a preventative maintenance program set up as we speak. And hopefully, we'll not have that issue ever again.
Yeah, I think you definitely want to check it probably spring, you know, April, May.
It needs to be checked easily, right when the temperatures start changing every year. And we thought that we checked it, but apparently, we didn't check it good enough.
All right. Thank you, George.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else?
Getting back to your first question, the roof is fine.
Okay. All right. I had envisioned the chillers or something are on the roof and somehow leaking into us like that, that, that worried me. So that's, that's good to know, at least it was inside the building. All right. Anything else? Okay, got a path forward? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, committee updates, this ought to be short. Jimmy?
You just heard from the library, we covered about everything they have to cover, I think.
Okay. Okay. Kevin?
We have a personnel board Thursday night, is it seven or 7:30?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. So all of you that like to get up early and come join us at the personnel board meeting, come on, you're more than welcome. You have to add a couple, or one, at least one member. We're going through applications and discuss some of the personnel.
Okay. I don't have any committee updates. I will have some at the next council meeting then. Department heads. Kevin?
Do you want me to discuss the meeting items?
Uh, we'll wait till we get to the agenda. Okay. Paige?
I'll just let y'all know real quick, and Chris is here behind me, so he can confirm. But the fireworks that we did have in-house that were supposed to be shot off last year, were picked up by Zambelli's. So we are working with them right now to get a refund on those fireworks that we could put towards, you know, the fireworks we're shooting off this year. So, we have an internal meeting on Friday, so we are going to gear up for that. Getting with J and M Displays, who's going to be shooting off our fireworks this year, and kind of get a game plan together, making sure we've got all our ducks in a row for the Fourth of July, so. And Ann Brooks is here, we're excited to have the ball and pops back on the bluff. So I hope y'all have been practicing, because we're ready.
We're, we're. But can we get over?
Okay, all right. But that's it, that's all I was going to say.
Being good, it needs practice.
Bobby?
We've had a year off.
All right, right about there.
Councilmen's, pardon me back here. Thank you, council. Tonight on the agenda, we'll have a project we want to bring forward to you all about re-renovations on the greens at number six and number 11 at the golf course. We want to shut those greens down and remodel them, repair them, and re-grass them due to the slope that's in the green. It's been a tough challenge to keep the speed of the green in adequate speed. And also, for drainage and grassing purposes, it's just time to have those redone. And so I've put together a little, some notes for you about how the renovation would go. It'd take about roughly 10 to 12 weeks, probably no more than 14, you know, weather permitting, to have this done. We think it's necessary. Jeff Williams and Pat White and I have discussed this at length. We've also had Jeff Cor Nelson with AgroMax help consult on this. And we just think it's the proper thing to do. Mr. Williams put in the budget from last year to have approximately $25,000 appropriated for this. So we're just following through and doing some housekeeping to get this on the agenda with you all. And then in my notes, it has the exact price that was on the quote that we wanted to accept from Shoreline. I have some demographics there, topo maps of the greens we're going to do, and then a little illustration of, some pictures there to show how the grassing is done rebuilding the greens. But we think it's necessary and wanted to bring it to your attention. And if you have any, you have any questions, Jeff and Pat White are here.
Yeah, it says surface, excuse me, turn them again, resurfacing of the greens. Are they going to, you're going to knock down that slope? You say, are you going to, are you going to enlarge the greens any?
I don't think they'll be enlarged. We'll talk with Shoreline Turf when they're here. There's no really need, the, the greens are both adequate in size. They're probably two of our bigger sized greens.
For some of you golfers.
But the slope in them is severe. Yeah, make them bigger, that'd be better. But really, it's the slope and the grade of, as you know, you've played there several times. It's, you know, you try to, in, in the winter time, when the, when the grass is thick, it's really not a problem. But in the summertime, when the greens get a little quicker and hard, it's just hard to keep the ball on the green. When they're dormant, coming out of transition, sometimes people just putt and it just rolls off the green, you can't stop it. So, we don't want it to be the U.S. Open every week.
Anything, any, so you're going to discard the unacceptable soil? So it'll be good soil, it'll be good sand, any kind of drainage placed under the greens?
I'd have to defer to Pat on that. Not really, no, because of the slope that's on there. As long as we keep it at five to seven degrees of slope, I don't think we're going to need to do that.
And the reason I ask, I mean, it's, it is, for Jimmy and Kevin, my experience, it's a very good price. That's why I asked if it was going to be any larger or not. I mean, that's a, and they are small greens, six especially, but.
All the greens and, of course, the tees are push-up. When the golf course was first built, it was built with just pushing, what we call push-ups, that they literally take the soil and push it up and then grow grass on it. So there's no USGA specs or gravel or drain lines underneath it. So, but the grade of the greens and the slope was intended to get the water to run off, but it's just too severe. And it's not a complete rebuild, but you're right, we call it a no-til process. We basically get rid of the bad grass that's up there, and then come in with new Tiftdorf Bermuda. It'll be out of Tifton, Georgia. It'll come on refrigerated trucks, and that's included in the price. Shoreline Turf has done a lot of work for Pat, and has done a lot of golf course work throughout the southeast. But Pat's very familiar with them, and so is Jeff Williams. So we feel confident we have a good crew to do it. It will, you know, we'll have to shut down the hole, we'll play temporary greens, that's the negative side of it. I don't really think it'll be a, a loss in revenue. Some people don't want to play temporary greens. But I think for the short span that it's down, it'll be complimentary to the golf course and what we're trying to do at the golf course to make it better. I think we've done enough media work and talking to all the groups that play out there. They know that it's coming, and it'll be a little inconvenient, but it'll be better in the long run.
And, and then, maybe more important than anything to, to us, is that this was budgeted in this past year's budget?
Correct, yes. Jeff Williams and Pat had it in last budget before I was rehired, yes. So it's in there.
Questions? Thank you, Bob.
And we'll be here, council meeting, if you need to ask Pat or Jeff, we'll all be here. Thank you.
Pat?
I'll just touch on that for a minute as well. The contours of six and 11 make it very difficult to have a variety of pin placements. So when you have a very limited area, you can do your pin placements, you're putting a lot of concentrated traffic in those areas. So, that's the kind of the things we struggle with, with those greens. We need to share the love.
That's a good point.
And make better pin placements. As far as drainage, one thing to consider, you know, drain lines are great. But unless you have the soil profile to allow the water down to the drain line, then they're of no use to you. So, that's really what we want to do, is improve the soil profile with a sandy profile to allow the water to percolate through.
Well, it makes sense, and I, I was, you know, looking through that scope of work and just wondering, you know, quite honestly, why the, the price was low, not why. You know, I didn't think it was high, I thought it was, I thought it was pretty darn reasonable, something we don't see much of, so.
I agree.
I'm wondering what we were getting, okay?
Okay, on another note, the Fairhope storm lost on Saturday, so their season is over. I think they finished eight and two on the year, so they had a great year. But that is over with, and we had no issues on Saturday, so that was great. I have a couple of things on tonight's agenda, if you'd like for me to discuss.
Kevin, I know I put you off, but you probably have more than him. So yeah, go ahead, Pat.
So, the materials for the ADA complacency is on tonight's agenda. If you have any questions about that, myself or George can answer those questions for you. Also, the scoreboard and video board. I noticed on here, it does say to award bid for materials, but it is for materials and installation.
Okay.
That, that price.
Let's, we might want to correct that. If I can find that, to award. Bid for materials and installation, okay? Good. I had that question on the radio, and I thought that was the, the case, but I wasn't certain.
And also, I'd like to point out, I think it's important, because I've, I've heard a lot of comments about the video board. And, and it is a, a luxury item, I get that. But it won't be just used for football events. It'll be used for Special Olympics. It'll be used for graduation night, which I think it takes graduation to a new level. We also plan to try to have movie nights in the stadium. If we can show a Christmas movie and have families in the stadium, I think that would be a great thing to do. So, there's a lot of different things that we can do with it to benefit not only the school, but the community as well.
So what is the total cost to make those ADA improvements to the stadium? I know that it's the $22,000.
Right.
Tonight, but there's, you know, that's just a portion of the project, right?
Yeah, the project was budgeted for $150,000. I haven't heard from Richard how much over we're going to be on that.
Or say $200,000?
I think we're going to be under that.
Yeah. So maybe $150,000 to $200,000?
Yes, sir.
I think people's rub with the, with the scoreboard or video board is this. The schools are helping pay for a video board, they didn't offer to pay anything for ADA compliance. And graduation, as you mentioned, all sports, you know, all of those things the stadium is being used for. You know, just wondering where, where everybody's priorities are. Because the scoreboard's a luxury, the ADA seems like an absolute necessity. In fact, it is a necessity.
Right, and I agree with you. I think, I, I wish the county would have stepped up to help us more.
I'd like to ask, everybody just ask the county school board that question when you see them.
Because I, I know that the county made every other school in the county ADA compliant. Now, it's not the best-looking ramps. They did the aluminum ramps in most of the stadiums, but they did pay to make everybody ADA compliant. Now, we're a little different, we're a city-owned facility, but.
Is Foley a city-owned facility?
They're, they're on a, on a campus, they're on the campus of elementary school, yes, sir.
I, I thought that stadium was city-owned, okay?
Gulf Shores is the only other city-owned, but now they're a city-run school system.
But they don't mind paying on the city-owned property for the scoreboard? Sorry, I just.
No, I hear you.
It bothers me a little bit, to be honest. No, don't complain too much, they won't do that well. Pay for the ADA or pay for the scoreboard, and then ask us to pay for the scoreboard, I mean. Yeah, I think we should keep the heat on them. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Ms. Jessica?
Good evening. Just a reminder that we've got some major roadwork coming up. You've probably seen some of the, some of the press releases and maybe some of the app pushes. But starting tomorrow morning at 7:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, the intersection at Magnolia and Church will be closed, as they're beginning that church-street infrastructure work in the, in the intersection there. They'll be reopened, but, you know, that is coming down the pipeline, that we are going to have to shut that down for an extended period of time. Additionally, we have the Twin Beach and Greeno Road improvements, the turn lane improvements, and the signal improvements. You should start seeing signage out on Twin Beach this week, I'm sorry, out on Greeno this week. They'll be getting work, they'll begin work on the east side of that intersection, so, you know, back toward the high school. But they should be done, it's the goal, by the time school starts, weather permitting.
Okay.
Is there additional infrastructure work going on in the future down on Section Street? I know they've been out there surveying, I didn't know if that was related to that.
Possibly. You know, we're in the middle of quite a bit of infrastructure work. I don't want to speak specifically to that, because I don't have that in front of me right now, and so I don't want to misspeak. But, but, you know, we are definitely in the thick of it right now.
The job now runs from the plant to Fells Avenue.
What do you think? Oh, Church Street will go all the way to Fells Avenue, absolutely.
Isn't that what you asked about Church?
He's asking Section.
Section Street.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But yeah, Church Street.
I thought I understood Church.
And they'll be doing that phase by phase, but they're, they're working very hard to make sure everyone's notified. We did notify all the businesses in the Magnolia and Church Street, Church Street area last week, you know, in person, to make sure that they know, we want to impact people as little as possible. I mean, obviously, we know it's going to be a little uncomfortable, but we're working hard. Thank you.
So, Ms. Jessica, the, sorry, the Church and Magnolia Street intersection, but that will only be closed for a few days.
Sure, it'll be 7:00 a.m. tomorrow, so 7:00 a.m. Tuesday until 5:00 p.m. Thursday. However, that will be closed again in a few weeks for an extended period of time. You know, they are going in, and they're updating that drainage, they're updating, you know, all of those utility lines.
Will that be just on between Fairhope Avenue and Magnolia then? And then the Fairhope Avenue-Church Street intersection will remain open?
Correct, and that'll be, again, it's a very slow-going, so that's a little bit premature at this point.
They get to that, they'll have to close that intersection for a few days.
Absolutely, so it's a little bit premature to talk about Fairhope and, and Church, I'm sorry, Fairhope and Church, yes. I need a map, I'm not so great with these directions. But it's a little premature to talk about that. We'll be shutting down that intersection at Church and Magnolia first.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions?
Questions?
Don't ask me about east and west, because we'll mess it up every time. Thank you.
Okay. Jason?
I'll follow up with, Magnolia will be involved because of the water there. So that's going to be extended, not on the first closing, but on the second closing. The first one is just getting the storm drain up there, the second one will be tying water and sewer, so that will be involved. The survey crew you saw on section today is for us, that's Dewberry. That's for the, surveying for the new forest man coming from the Twin Beach, the new Twin Beach list. surveying for the new forest man coming from the Twin Beach, the new Twin Beach lift station to Fells and Church Street where we're tying in. Also, for the station that we're moving across the road, it'll be a smaller station, because the new station at Twin Beach will pump all the way to Fells. We won't have intermediate stations, so the odor goes away. And also, the smaller station across the road, we've got anticipation of putting more on it. There won't be a lot on it right now, because it's just the gravity for our area, we're going to put some of Twin Beach on it, so. You'll see a lot of work around with them and us, you'll see our guys out, so to follow up with some updates. Our guys have been out, I know you've seen them, they're working long hours, they're doing a tremendous job with what we've got in front of us to do. We're looking at lift stations now and what we can rehab in-house. We've got a great crew and some of them, we're gonna, that did make the restore, that we're having to do ourselves. And the way times are with the engineers and with being able to get parts, a lot of them are going to do ourselves and go submersible, so there's some things that we're doing now, trying to get prepared to do that, so hopefully that'll start this fall on the stations. We've lost several stations that was originally on the restore, that didn't work out because the city does not own the property. So anyway, that's some of the challenges that we're up. On the water side, you're going to hear more from me on this, where we've got some major challenges ahead of us on the water, capacity issues and some of that, I won't go into depth, because it's critical infrastructure and I don't think that should be discussed at this setting, but we've got several challenges with that. The growth has came in the last several years and the upgrades to the water system didn't follow through, so we're bringing back here in the next month, you should see, I'll forbid for the new well at treatment plant three. Toss on tonight's agenda is the transmission line.
Yeah, you want to touch on that, that's item 12, council.
Yes.
Selection of a Kimley horn.
Yes, sir. And that is for the transmission line on 33. We're also doing, looking at that site, that site, after looking at the, the geologists, the work that they did, we have another aquifer there that we're going to be able to tap into. So in the very near future, that site will be 5 million gallons a day capacity. So that exceeds a 16, so we'll be looking at a 24 to get from that station back to Fairhope Avenue, to bring that water back to town. And then we can talk further, we've got some restore funds that we're also advocating for the improvements on the water system.
Are you talking about the money from the American Recovery Act? I absolutely think that that money should be used for this.
So we are, and we're not short, we're not looking at tomorrow, we're looking at five and 10 years down the road to get the water where it needs to be for this city. We've also got a new, a well that we can add, well field one, which is on Fairhope Avenue, and all that's part of this. So in a very short order, without a lot of money being spent, we're going to get the capacity up somewhere, right now, we're in the nine to 10 million gallon a day range. When this project that we're talking about is over, we'll be in the 15 to 18 million gallon a day range, so it's, this can't be done overnight, but we've got a good direction and a good plan. And it's, Curtis and Tim both have been great, we've worked with, we've got some engineers that I have a history with on water treatment that I'll bring to the table at the next meeting. We go 20 years of water quality and experience with that and I trust them, so anyway, and that's Cribs, and I bring that information back, working with the mayor on that now. And they've worked for the city before, they're already approved engineer.
Okay.
What, two more things on the agenda for us, I think.
Yeah, help me out, I'm trying to scan all 30 of them at one time and pay attention to you at the same time.
We've got the.
Got a F-250 Supercap.
23 and 24. Yes, sir. We canceled the order on one truck that you all approved back three months ago, it didn't make it to the bill and there's no delivery date, so we canceled the order on the, on that truck, and these trucks are on the yard, so they actually made it in and they're a, our purchasing department has a good relationship with Stivers and they agreed to hold the trucks until they are approved. And if they're not approved, there's no penalty to the city, so then. The 181 project, you've got the not to exceed for the engineering on that, that's to replace from just south of Twin Beach on 181 to County Highway 34. That's an area.
Are you talking item?
16, yes, sir.
Which number?
16.
Oh, 16, okay.
Yes, sir.
I got you, I'm with you now. I was still looking at 12.
That's, our guys call that Band-Aid Alley. They fix a lot of leaks in that short stretch, so this is replacing that with ductile from the Stausa Stone, right there at Stone Creek entrance to 34.
I'm with you on that.
Also upsizing it from a six to a eight, that stretch, so it'll be a new ductile, and that's also for the future, so we can come back. Our next would be, we would call phase two of this, is to bring the line from there up to Twin Beach where we have a dual feed, six on Twin Beach and a six on 181.
Questions, council?
I'll just say, Jason, I know you've got a lot of large projects you're working on that are, are things that may be little, should have been done, you know, previously, and I appreciate you taking the approach of trying to get them done, but also, you know, get them done for the next 10, 15, 20 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George, you have anything else?
Wanted to inform you all and keep you all up to date on the relocation of the geese at the North and South Beach Park. We have gotten a price back from Wildlife Solutions, they are going to be the same as last year, which is under $7,500, or $7,500 or under. There's roughly 130 of them down there right now, and the plan of relocation would be sometime between mid-June and mid-July during the molting season.
All right.
Didn't know.
So do, we don't need to take any action because it's been approved, because mid-June is tomorrow?
Well, yeah, and it was budgeted.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, last year, we said we'd take care of it this year. Typically, we'll say, just because it's budgeted last year, that budgeted number, if it doesn't get spent, doesn't roll over, but.
Right.
I know that we've brought it up enough times in the council meeting and we're all aware of it, and I think we'd be in favor of that relocation.
Okay.
And I just want the public to understand that, you know, it really, it is painful to see that Fairhope, you know, gets voted as, you know, having dirty beaches and bacteria when they're walking up to the water's edge and taking bacteria samples and we know it's due to geese. I mean, it, that's what it is, and then you, you're in, oh, it's the sewage, no, it's not, it's the geese, is what it is.
You cannot walk in South Beach right now without.
I've heard some nightmare stories. Apparently, some pretty large geese down there.
Yes. And we also have the, on the agenda for the concrete bid for, for labor, for concrete, if we need it. I realize that is a high price, I don't like the price either, kind of is what the going rate is, unfortunately, out in the field right now, and we will be only using that contract if, if it gets to a point where we have a situation where we're just overloaded and we have to get somebody to go out there.
And we hope that that's a temporary. Like I said, I think what's going to happen is a lot of people are going to cancel some construction projects or postpone construction projects and some of these, some of these prices are going to come back, come back down there, according to some so-called experts that I've talked to.
Right, and so hopefully, we don't have to use it, but if, we just want it there in case, in case we need it.
Right.
And that's, that's all that I know of so far.
Okay. Right. You got anything for us tonight? Are you awake? Yes?
I'm just here for body.
I thought you were, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, all right. Chief, Alice? So you brought your bodyguard with you tonight?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to let you know, this past weekend, we hosted a class about firefighter rescue skills on Saturday, and then on Sunday, we put those skills to work in live fire scenarios. It was put on by Port City Fire Training Company, and we had instructors from Mobile Fire, Decatur Fire, Atlanta, Virginia, and we had an instructor from FDNY as well. The class was a huge success, we had 40 students from Baldwin County, we had some from Florida, Illinois, and from Georgia. The instructors were very impressed with our fire department and the facilities we have, so I'd like to say thank you to the firefighters for their efforts that they take to, what they do to make the fire department what it is and protect the city. And I'd also like to thank you, the council, the mayor, and the city for the support they give us. We do have an item on the agenda this afternoon, item 26, and if you have any questions about that, Assistant Chief Combs is here to answer those.
So that's the squad two vehicle?
Yes, sir.
And you do understand that the truck was on the state bid list, so we could buy that, but then the equipment that you need, the add-ons, I believe that we have to get some, maybe some bids on that or quotes on that.
Those should all be, based on talking with purchasing, those are all on either buying groups or they bid, I believe.
Okay. But I don't believe that this truck, I don't think this is the outfitted price, right? Is that right Dalton?
That's right.
So council, you'll be seeing some more on this truck coming up, but this is all that we could put on the agenda tonight. And I did not realize that the equipment, they have found that now.
Yes, sir.
They may not have known that at the time.
They found most of that on, from buying groups and such, so.
Okay.
We worked on that this last week, so.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Jeremy?
Good afternoon, council members, legal dude, super clerk, sash, mayor, how y'all doing? Just want to say Travis had a, he had a book out, HR, he said I'd cover for him, basically what Councilman Boone said. He was mad, he took his, his update, so he left, I'm just playing, he had a prior game.
He's kind of new, did he know that, did he know that there's a fine for leaving early?
We're going to, we're going to charge him tomorrow, we'll take care of that. Valana is, I feel like I said the same thing, I can't remember if it was in the mayor's update or to you guys, but Valana's been demolished, so it's, it's under worse, getting rebuilt. Contractors working hard on that, we're hoping to be energizing that mid-July, somewhere around there, so looking at the load today and the heat index, it's getting kind of scary, so we'll be watching that closely for a month. I'm going to get with Jessica and hopefully do some energy efficiency communications out just to, everybody to know, if you don't have to run your oven and dryer in daytime during peak hours, let's try to do it off-peak hours, so.
Tell them to put a cup of chlorine down their condensation line.
And to make sure they hit their AC drains, for sure. So that's, that's that. I've got a lot more spec for Hunter and the building department, planning department, BOA passed at Morphy Site, so that's a good thing, so we're starting work on that, so. Yeah, them guys go through a lot, so glad it ain't them, but it's tough. So I think that's all I got. I got item number, lucky item number 13, y'all put me on there, I know it ain't as important as Pat or some of these others, but if you want me to cover that real quick.
Yeah, will you cover that real quick?
Yeah, sure, so.
Is that for the Morphy Avenue site?
No, this is, this is a system study for the whole entire electric grid.
What?
So we did the capacity study for the substations upgrade. This is for the conductors, we know we got lines that are built 40, 50 years ago that just will not push the capacity and the heavy loads out there, so we're going to need to upgrade some conductors. This study will tell us where our problems are, look at our loads now and in the future of what we do know that we're going to be building, because we know growth is happening and we know there's places that are getting close to their capacity, that's, that's not a, it's not going to be able to carry those loads and we don't want to burn it on the ground.
Jeremy, I got to ask the question though, I mean.
Sure.
They just put together a $12 million plan for upgrading all the substations.
Substations.
What could possibly be added to that?
Absolutely. So you have a, you've got a heart that beats the blood, you got to have the arteries, or else your blood ain't going to flow anywhere. Those conductors are arteries to the city to get that capacity and that voltage out there, and that's what, that's what we're looking at.
So when they gave all the recommendations, which there's $12 million worth, to do all of these upgrades, these substations.
That was specifically.
They left out conductors.
Capacity study for the substations and what we can push. That wasn't anything to do with the conductors that have to carry those electricity.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is more distribution, not capacity.
Exactly, yes, this is all distribution, not the 46.
Kind of like the sewer and treatment facility is one.
It's the same thing.
You got the collection system or you got the treatment plan, I got you.
Same thing Jill's going through, we just haven't, did this infrastructure upgrade and we're here now and it's slapping us in the face, so.
Okay.
Got to get it done.
We've got brand-new electricity now, we just got to get it there, right?
Right, got to get it there.
Okay.
All right.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Good.
Hunter, do you have anything you want to discuss, or are all yours going to be public hearings?
About that, two things, I can leave the public hearing for. The agenda minutes, I do have a couple of quick updates. The Planning Commission this past week did create, and I know we've discussed this in a work session before, did create a parking committee to study some of the issues, especially within the CBD, without giving a long, drawn-out, I mean, I want to kind of hit with small, small punches of what, why this is important. And one of the things that, we're talking about infrastructure and all the things the city provides, and we never take the cost of that parking. What does that cost the city? Just quick, couple of quick numbers, there was actually an article in our Planning Association this month that looked at cost, and the title of the article is "Poor Herb Management Is Costing Cities Billions." So what they did is they studied a variety of cities around the US that had metered parking. I am not proposing metered parking, let me just say this, but it, there is a cost associated. We have 1,889 parking spaces, public parking spaces in the CBD. If you look at what that is for market value, it's upwards of $25 million for land value. That's provided free. That, that is just the real estate cost, and then you look at the opportunity cost. If we had metered parking, the average around the US, and this is including all cities, this is from Honolulu to smaller cities, is, generates $1,077 per year in revenue per parking space. That's an average of over $2 million in revenue that if we had metered parking at a national average, that would be generated. So that's the opportunity cost. That also doesn't take into account the maintenance that Public Works does, the striping, those sort of things. So when we talk about why parking is important and why we're, we're hitting this kind of tension with some new developments of, you know, where we only provide, they only provide one parking space, then it spills out to their neighbors, this is why it's important, and we're looking at that study and this committee is going to be charged with what can we do, other than putting metered parking in? So what options do we have? So just wanted to give you an update on that. Also, today, I think there were some questions, there was a cell tower installed by Walmart out on 181. We have a small cell ordinance, and this is another small cell, I think it's a pole, wooden pole of 30 to 40 feet, and we received some questions and comments, and we just want to say, you know, we get applications and usually they're in bulk. I think when we received that application originally of 13, there were 13 small cells, first thing we do is review them and what, what jurisdiction is that in? So there were two at the time that were not in our jurisdiction, that is actually in a Baldwin County right-of-way, so we send that to them. You know, we have a small cell ordinance and as y'all know, with the Fairhope Avenue by the courthouse, we work well and AT&amp;T worked well with us to get an option that's not a 40-foot wooden pole. They replaced a, a street light in the parking lot, added the small cell to it, it kind of blends in as you drive by. We didn't have that opportunity here, so anyone that has questions about that, you might want to contact Baldwin County. I'm not sure if they have a small cell ordinance, I'm not sure how they're reviewing those things, but you might want to contact Baldwin County and, and see what they, they have to say and if they can review those, but we can't do that when it's not our jurisdiction.
Okay.
That's all. Any questions?
Eric?
No, sir.
What? No?
Issue is permanent since we speak.
Okay. Marcus, legal department? Clerk? Okay. I miss anybody? Okay. I miss anybody? Okay. Counsel, do you have anything else? We'll move into the agenda and maybe cover some things that we missed.
I just like to make sure, because the last time this was brought up, as far as brought the word up, meter, they had a petition on the street within 30 minutes. There is no consideration for meters at this present time. No need for a petition being signed, or let's stop the meter system, because there's nothing being considered at this present time. Want to make sure everybody in radio land or video land understand, no meters are being considered. Thank you.
To clarify, this is, options we're looking at are new development, not going after existing meters.
That meter is a bad, bad word.
So item 6 be a public hearing, and we'll introduce that ordinance, and Hunter will give a presentation. We'll open that up to the public to comment on. Item 7 and 8 are final adoptions. Item number 9, which will be of interest to people, will be an ordinance repealing and place, repealing and replacing, replacing, I can't say that. Certain section of the code and ordinances regarding the electric rates, and just a preview of that, the bulk of that would relate to, if you are a residential customer, your base rate would go from $11.10 a month to $13, so an increase of $1.90. And then there are some increases of, I think, $1.50 to $2 on the commercial rates as well. And remember, that's a base, that's fixed. There were no changes to the, to the rates for our usage or consumption. There is the creation of a hospital rate, a customer that uses over 500 kilowatts per month. No increase in rates there. Actually, there's a slight decrease in rates in that segment. Number 10 is authorizing the mayor to apply for a grant through the American Rescue Plan Act, $1.941 million. And I was thinking, Jason, that, you know, having to build a new well, probably put in a new water tower soon, you know, this might be where we get the funds from to do, to do so. Item 11 is a certificate of amendment approved for the Fairhope Airport Authority. What this has to do with is where the directors may or may not reside, and it states that four directors would, must reside within the corporate limits, and three directors may reside either in the corporate limits or in the, basically in the Baldwin, in the Fairhope feeder pattern. And that was to allow us to recruit additional members. And it says may or may not. And I believe that the, the Airport Authority's amendment, or resolution said four must reside within the corporate limits and three must reside within the corporate limits. Well, that kind of precludes you from living in the city limits, says you must. And we said, you may reside in the corporate limits or in the feeder pattern. That gives, gives us the option there and gives us flexibility.
I sent that to Josh Mark, their attorney, and he's changing their resolution.
He did, okay. So I missed their last meeting. They did not adopt that, yet that was their draft. Did he agree with that change?
Yes, he did.
Okay, I thought it made more sense that way. Okay. Item 12, I believe Jason covered that, the selection of Kimley Horn for professional consulting services for the new water transmission line. If you have any questions, we'll have Jason back up. Jeremy touched on the selection of steward engineering for the electric department. If we have any questions, we'll bring Jeremy back up on 13. 14 is rejecting all the bids, I believe. They said that the one price was excessive, and is going to ask the staff to seek informal quotes. Who would we have, who would we ask questions of?
That would be George.
Okay, George. Does anybody have any questions about that right now, just rejecting all those bids while we've got a minute or two we can spend it here? It's pretty straightforward. All right. Number 15, authorizing the mayor to select, or I'm sorry, to execute a contract with Vision Technology Solutions. I believe that we had asked her to go out and negotiate a fee schedule, and has come back with a fee of $11,205.81. Jessica, would that be you if we have questions about that? You or Kim?
Jeff.
Oh, Jeff, you back there? Okay. Did I miss you? Do you have a report at all? I'm sorry.
Not really, just a, just got the, this on the agenda.
Okay. Okay. Item 16 is authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with SC Civil, as Jason mentioned, for the water department, for the water main replacement in 181 and County Road 34. We'll ask him questions if we had any. Masonry and concrete work for ADA compliance. George, that would be you again. If we have questions? Are you or Pat? Okay. Pat, that would be you if we have questions about the scoreboard? Counsel, at the advice of the clerk, item 19, and she's asking that we remove item 19 from tonight's agenda. That's, that's going to have to be rebid. So I could say we could talk about why, but Lisa, do you want to touch on that just for a minute?
That would be George.
George, you want to touch on that? No. And we don't have to. It's not an agenda item. We, it's just simply being removed. It's got to be rebid, right? I think the situation with the air returns wasn't, wasn't what was expected, so the scope of work wasn't what was expected, so it's got to be rebid to have the proper scope of work. Is that right? Okay. Pardon?
They were informal quotes.
They were what?
They were quotes.
They were quotes? Well, it was to say to award the bid. What was it? They were bidders?
We need to reject the bids and put out the rebid.
I think that may be proper. Okay, so if you go back to the resolution... You want to help me with this, Marcus? I'm going to need a little help with this. Let me give you this. Can I just give you the resolution? Let me hand you this, and if you can redline that. So we'll be rejecting all bids, and it'll be put out for rebid. That's item 19. I'm sorry, no. I'm going to let you go, but we typically don't do this. What do you, what do you need?
I was going to just ask if we'd be in the way if we started packing up.
Oh, not at all. Go ahead. You can go ahead and pack up. Go ahead. I thought you were going to ask me something about that bid. I was like... Okay. Item 20 is awarded bid for the citywide concrete work. George, that would be you, right? Item 21, six every head doors for the fire station number three. Does that seem like the bid? That, that's been going on forever, hasn't it?
So we, we bid that last year during COVID, and that was one of the projects that got pulled.
Okay.
So it's just, it's, it was rebid this year, and that's who came, Bailey's was the one that was chosen for that price.
And it's under budget, by the way. So we can ask you if we have questions about that?
I can try to answer. Yes, sir. I know, I know some about it, so.
Well, we know that we've had a bid, and we've got, we've got a bid that's under budget, and we bid according to all the law, so.
We, like I said, last year, we bid it last year, and then COVID, we had to pull it because of COVID, so.
Okay. Bobby spoke to us about item number 22. If you have any questions, we can ask Bobby on item 22. Jason mentioned the purchase of the trucks, and they were also budgeted on items 23 and 24. Item 25 is a request to hold a chalk event on the sidewalks. Can cover that if necessary. Item number 26 is the purchase of the truck for the fire department. Let's say Chief Ellis or Dalton for that. The chiller unit, we can have discussion. We've already heard from George. We can have more discussion on that at the time. There's an appointment to the Parking Authority, write-off customer balances. And also, I'm going to ask you, when we, I guess we're not going to remove item 19, we're going to reject, but I'm going to ask you to add a resolution number 30. This is to approve the removal of 28 to 30 pine trees from Volanta Park, and is to award asphalt services to remove the pine trees. And they're actually going to take the timber as compensation for tree removal. I like that.
Counselor, that was something that, it's actually less expensive than it that way for the city, stumpage rates, right? We can't even buy any, come harvest timber, but if you just ask them to cut down the cost for you, that's actually a good, a very good deal.
Oh, yeah. Sounds like it. Sounds like it. Okay, let's see. I think that's it, so I'll ask you to amend the agenda to add item 30, and then we'll have a slight revision to item 19. I've got to make an announcement at the beginning, but for now, am I leaving anything out? Lisa? All right, we're going to head and adjourn and reconvene in about five minutes.